You're on.
I'd like to call the September 8th work session of the board of selectmen to order. Give me stand and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on down, Jim. Happy autumn.
I'm over this year.
I took the liberty of going back through the past months and coming up with some of the issues that affect you. Is there one or two that you need to talk on that are really important to you?
Yeah, there is. I actually did talk to F.R. Carroll yesterday when we did our drive around and looked at the road conditions. And one of the roads that is scheduled for the following year, which is North Line Road, seems like it deteriorated quite fast, a lot quicker than the other roads have. So I'm wondering if instead of doing brown this coming year, if we might want to move up, swap those two and do North Line first. It's quite broken up.
Would your recommendation be to do exactly what you've done on the other roads? Were they grinded and used that material? Or would you do the road base?
I think, yes, I do agree with that. We want to do that, particularly in the first part of coming off from Ledge Hill. That section there is just so broken up. We need to do that. Somebody probably ought to pass it again. So what I guess I'm proposing is we finish up on Durgan and then we spend the balance of that to see how far we can get on the first part of North Line.
Has he given you prices of what it would take to grind up and pave?
He said he would have it for me probably next week, so we'll have it for next week, I'm hoping.
What are your thoughts about increasing the paving budget, the warrant article? This has been asked of us at least the last five years. Budget is hinted at CIP.
I think if we were to change how we have it structured now with the money, as far as putting some of the money back into my budget.
You're talking the $50,000 road prep, right?
Correct. And maybe it would be worded a little differently so that it could be spread around a little bit more as well. Then yes, I think we should increase it. This year we spent about, I think it was $212,000 on paving and the shouldering.
Go ahead, I'm just...
Okay. Yep, so that's being said, I think the budget should be raised for there, particularly if we take up the $50,000 that was in my budget. I'd like to see that back where it cuts. We have a little bit of flexibility in our department in case we have another storm or two storms like we had this year, so we'll be able to have more flexibility.
So reducing the paving budget, is that what we're saying?
Well, I guess it would look that way, correct, reducing the paving budget, but it'd be putting some of the money back into my account, you know.
My understanding is that the $50,000 that used to be part of line item in your regular budget and then got moved to the paving article was identified as road improvement as a separate line within the budget, not just as money in the budget. And so when it got moved from being in the budget to part of the paving article, it didn't really change the use of that money. It just consolidated it outside the operating budget. I think what I hear you saying is that you need some additional money in your operating budget to accommodate storms and other things that come along. And unless we're gonna pretend that that $50,000 is for anything as opposed to for road improvement projects, it seems to me that the better approach is to say we ought to plus up some of the items in the regular road budget to accommodate this work rather than take money that's supposed to be used for rebuilding and repaving the roads and diverting it to something else. See what I'm saying?
I do, and maybe that does make sense. I just know that this year when we had the washout, they had me washed out on June 17th, you know, we had to basically rebuild Eastwood, completely washed out, and then also Harvest Lane took a pretty good beating. We had to redo the whole culvert and whatnot. And I kind of feel like some of that could have been...
Road rebuilding?
Yeah.
Well, and if that's the case, then why not charge it against the $235,000?
I did do a little bit of that. When we replaced the culvert, we enlarged the culvert so we wouldn't have that problem in the future on Harvest Lane, but I did not do that on Eastwood.
I guess, I'm just saying, if it's actual road improvement, road rebuilding, even if it's not specifically associated with more of the paving's going on and your thought is if you want money to do it and we have it in the paving and road improvement line, then maybe that's where we ought to charge it. Personally, I guess I'm somewhat ambivalent about whether we take that $50,000 and move it back into the regular budget. But every time we take the existing structure and we modify it, then as people look over time at how money's spent, it's easy, if you lose track of some of the details, to say, oh, look, you know, we were spending this much, we were spending less, or over here we were spending less, now we're spending more.
That makes sense.
So every time we make a structural change in what we do with budget money, you sort of have to kind of put a little footnote in there and say, okay, well, this is why this looks different than it was before because we're just slicing it a little bit differently. Once we've made that change in the way it's sliced, changing it again just in my mind creates the opportunity for more confusion. So if you feel that there ought to be some initial money in some of the regular line items to cover some of the sport that you're seeing, then...
So you've got...
A better, in my mind, a better approach would be to say, look, let's take this line and put some more money in it because that's what it's costing us to do business.
I mean, on the paving, it's not just road paving preparation. You spend $195,000 on actually paving roads. And so you've got 11-7 left, so you spent $30,000 of that, $235,000 on road construction, basically.
Shouldering and whatnot.
Yeah, all that stuff. So do we, I mean, it's already inclusive if we're thinking about increasing the paving budget. I'm just talking about that. That also includes road upgrades.
Right.
So it isn't just, so I think you're right in that we're talking about two different things. One is the general operating budget and the other is the paving or construction budget. So if we go to $250,000 on the paving, or whatever, I mean, pick a number, it's not really going to change the general operating costs, which continue to be an issue going forward. And I don't think there's, Jim, other than he's got more roads to pay or more money available.
I agree 100% with both you gentlemen, all three of you gentlemen, except however, it is a historical fact. I sat there at the budget committee. It was the most adversarial committee back then. And their comments were, there were three of them, three and a half of them, that anything over $10,000 is a capital improvement. Well, it's not. If you understand what capital improvements are all about, they are... Carolyn at the time was very wise in to fight the battles the selectmen could win. Because the year before, this guy left and they went and cut $15,000, $17,000 out of his budget. Okay? That's the way they reacted back then. They have changed and are complimentary. The other thing is that when they took that $50,000 and now put it in the capital improvement umbrella, it now rubbed the library and the police department of putting $50,000 aside because it inflated the capital capacity. And quite frankly, this is Lloyd Wood's opinion. That was part of their strategy.
Well, you mentioned CIP, and let me just step in because I know exactly what happened there. That $50,000 is capital and was counted as capital in CIP even when it was part of the operating budget because it was a road improvement. So that, if you go back and look at those old CIP reports from the old days, you had $50,000 in road improvement plus you had the $185,000 in paving, and they were both counted. So from a CIP standpoint, moving it didn't change it because it was still, it all still fit the criteria.
When I was on the CIP committee, I don't remember that, but in all fairness, I might have forgotten that and I will research it and get there.
The downside of increasing the paving budget, which includes road improvement parts, is managing it because we've got 11 grants sitting there now that we can't do anything but pave the roads with.
Well, I do have some projects still coming, so...
Right, but it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't, nor to the benefit of the winter budget, which is the other issue on the table.
When it talks about paving, I have a couple of things here about the shoulders on Union Wolf Road and paving the dump in Town Road aprons. You have a copy of that. Those two proposals, can we use? You know, how much will it cost with those two aprons? And how much will it cost for Carroll to pave the shoulders, not pave the shoulders, but gravel the shoulders after they finished Union Wolf Road? Correct?
We did talk about that. I did get a price on it as well yesterday.
So, you know, in my mind, if there are some funds available, I think they could be used this year
Oh, there's no question.
To fund those projects. I mean, it's up to these guys to decide.
There's plenty of places for them to go. I did get a price from F.R. Carroll. And to do Union Wolf edges, shoulders, like we did up on Durgan, it's $13,000. So I'm comfortable feeling that we could do it ourselves here and get it done for less money. So that's the way I'm proposing to do it.
How much? How much can you do it for?
I think I could do it for probably about $7,000.
Could that be done by, for example, the end of the month?
Yes. And then also I would...
And the money would come out of paving, correct?
Correct.
Now, here is the thing I have on that is when Carroll did it, they used equipment that really pounds the shoulders down. And you and I've had this discussion. The vibrator that we have does two to three inches. Their roller does it eight inches or more. And I look at Durgan Road that has a steep hill there, and guess what? The last two and a half inches of rain didn't wash anything out, did it? That's what I'm concerned with, and that's not a criticism of your equipment or your guys.
I do, I do feel that their job is more professional, but at this point in time, I don't feel we have the budget for it. But also on the same subject, you were talking about the compaction rate. I do have a large compactor that does have a high compaction rate. It's as good as a lot of the same equipment they're using as far as compaction rate. I haven't always had it. This is something I've been adding the last couple of years because it's a very expensive piece of equipment that I bought, you know, personally, just for this. But I will agree, I think theirs does come out better. They have, you know, a lot more money invested in equipment. However, I do think ours will be sufficient for what we're trying to do on that road.
Now, we have, what, how much money did you say we have left in that?
11,000.
And if we can use $7,000 of it to fill it?
Yeah, I just, I'm, second, you're concerned. I don't want to spend $7,000 and have to do it again in a year and a half.
On the other hand, if I understand, Union Wolf Road, everything does have to be done. It's about 40% of the linear footage, right?
I don't think it's everything, correct. When I did talk to him, he did base it on everything. He says it comes in less, it comes in less, but he does not want to come back to us. It gives us less price now and come back and say, I need an extra $1,500 or $2,000. He says he doesn't want to do business that way.
You know, I support your decision. The only question I have is in your judgment, is the hours that you're working on that project take you away from projected fall issues?
No, I do, I do, but not really at this time because our fall budget is so small that I don't think that...
And I don't think you can impact it at all, and you don't have that option.
Right.
Yeah, what would you normally do with the fall budget?
A lot of times it has to do with road grading and just getting the culverts and everything cleaned out and ready for winter.
Well, paving having Carroll gravel the shoulders of Union Wolf Road when needed, I guess we've kind of taken that off the table. And I guess as Larry the Cable Guy would say, get her done. Is that a consensus, someone else?
I do also have more money that needs to be spent as far as paving. Where we replace the culvert on Harvest Lane, I need to have that paved next area. And also on Shirley Way, going up there, this spring, we actually had some plow damage that caught the edge of the pavement and wrecked it. We dug up the broken pavement and we gravelled it, which was fine for the summer. We have not got it paved yet, and I'd like to have that paved, the areas that were damaged, so that we don't...
So that would use your 11th grand, right?
For the most part, yeah.
So we don't have the 7 to pay for the...
No, no, it erased. I'm guessing, I haven't got a firm price on it yet.
You think a 5 grand?
I'm thinking it's probably...
$45,000?
Probably just, yeah. I'm guessing it's around $4,4500, which would be the whole budget.
Well, I have no problem with this plan.
No, I don't either. It's, you know, provided we stay within the $11,000, $736.18.
I don't have a choice on that.
Well, I mean, in that...
Back to the paving budget, I will tell you historically, at least over the last several years, Jim has come in pretty darn close to the $235,000. I mean, it's like $233,000 and change, $234,000 and change. So from my perspective, you have managed that budget line to get all that you can out of it. So I don't see a situation where coming the end of the year, we have money we can't spend that we need to spend someplace else because it's locked into this one area, which tells me that there's, that there's plenty to do, including some little catch-up stuff around the edges that you can, that you can finish up the use of that money to do what it's purpose for, which is road repaving and rebuilding. So, thank you for that.
And I'm certainly not, you know, obviously we have to work the corners that we're going to do here, but I'm certainly not averse to the notion of pushing the paving budget. I remember when it was $180,000, it was $180,000 for a million years, so it went to $235,000. If we can justify it by saying our paving schedule is this, and then push it to $250,000 or whatever, $275,000, I don't have a problem going to the budget committee with that, but it needs to have a lot of backup in order to justify it. I mean, it's not just increasing budgets for the sake of increasing the budget, but it's actually...
Yes.
My recollection over the last several years, when the question's been asked to Jim, you've said that you felt that the current level for paving was covering our needs well. I guess what I would ask is, take another look at it, look at what we're talking about going forward. The question's gonna come up again, and if you feel that having more money for the road repaving budget will help us not fall behind in terms of doing this, rebuilding it and repaving it, then step up and say, hey, I want to go to $250,000 or whatever it is.
Yeah, I need the numbers from Frank Carroll.
Yeah, no, no, that's what I'm saying is that you're the guy, you're the guy that's closest to what's going on out there on the roads.
The man on the ground.
Yeah, right. And so I think it's good that the question comes up from budget committee and others do need more money, but in my view, you're the guy that ought to lead and say, I look at this and if we put another X amount in the budget for road repaving, then that will help us keep our tenure plan on track.
And if something's close, I mean, something's nine years out or eight years out, I mean, we really need to look at costs. I mean, I don't think we're currently experiencing a little petroleum bump. It's gonna change from time to time, the cost of the paving, and we need to keep ahead of that so that we can continue to pave the same number of miles.
Well, the rate that we're doing right now is that we should have every road repaved at 15 years. That's at the rate we're going two miles a year, basically, you know.
This is an interesting thing, and I back him up. This is paving condition. Basically, eight to 10 years, every road should be repaved. Because what happens is it becomes exponential when it drops off the mathematical. Read this at your convenience.
Now, is that just, does this speak to overlay or does it speak to the way that Jim does it, which is rebuilt?
Well, I can answer that question. At 10 years, eight to 10 years, you can do an overlay. At 15 years, we're regrinding and making a new base because the cracks have split too far and were past that point.
So, and one of the things, as I drive around the state and observe state roads as well as other town roads, one of the challenges we have with overlay is it doesn't address drainage issues, doesn't address sufficiency of base. And so any cracks in underlying roads or any underlying pavement when you just lay a new layer on top, they're gonna work their way right back up through. And, you know, that continues to happen on the state roads. And I'm just thinking out loud, wonder if we said, okay, we're just gonna do an overlay at 10 years on the town roads. Pretty soon the town roads are gonna look like the state roads because it's, because you're gonna have tracks. You're gonna have those deep boulders that work their way up, yeah?
And maybe we consider a secondary warrant article, like every five years, we're gonna do five miles to catch up reconstruction, not just paving, but actually taking those boulders out.
Well, that's what Jim does now. That's what he does now.
When he came aboard...
Well, we can see what he's done on Durgan Road when it's over because you're not going down four feet.
Oh, that'd be a major reclamation.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I mean, there's, there are culvert issues on Durgan Road, for instance, and on any number of roads around town. We just need to dig everything up, get the rocks out of there, rebuild it. And maybe that's a different warrant article than this warrant article. It's probably a sign up for this year, but it's something we should maybe have an engineer look at.
He has been doing this, for example. How many rocks and stumps did you take out of Sodom Road? Over 250?
Oh, easily, yeah.
Out of the road bed?
Yes. And I mean, he found culverts that were amazingly poor. He also found wires from the original telephone company that had been, remember through Aunt Myra's Corner? They were just woven down, down the road and the people who looked for those things couldn't find them.
But it would be hoped that you could actually do a 15, I mean, this is stuff about a 15-year cycle. You could increase your cycle if your roads could withstand it, but your roads can't withstand it.
Right.
If they're not...
When he came aboard, he said, when we do Sodom Road, when we do Ledge Hill Road, I want to spend another $35,000 and grind it and use it as the material. How many culverts did you do on Ledge Hill Road?
I'm not positive the number, but...
Wasn't it 12?
I'm guessing 15, yeah.
And Ledge Hill Road and Sodom Road were number one and two as far as vehicle traffic, still are. Durgan Road's number three, and there's some heavy truck traffic that goes over.
There really is.
Yeah. And it, how much to, one comment here, on the pavement performance is if we repave to your specifications within the first eight to 10 years, for every dollar we spend and restores the pavement, it would wait five years and it creeps up to $4 and $5. And, you know, you came aboard and you educated the selectmen, you educated the budget committee, and I look at these three roads, it's paid off, hasn't it?
We're hoping. Time will tell. Yes, that's what we're hoping.
But I just want to just reiterate, it's not vehicular traffic that's wearing our roads out. It is the weather.
Yeah.
And it's the condition of the road that...
Right.
And we don't, we can't compare the state study with our own study because this is looking at all the roads in the state. There's a lot of roads out there that get a lot more traffic than some of our roads get. And they're gonna wear out because of vehicular traffic. Ours are wearing out because every year it's frosty.
Well, it's a combination of things. I mean, it's, it's the amount of traffic, it's the weight of the traffic, much more than the amount. So the heavy traffic breaks down the road surface. But if you don't have a good base, it doesn't matter how, you know, how good the pavement is, you're still gonna get the cracks and the frost heaves and all that sort of thing.
Big go.
We're 15 minutes away from our deadline. How we doing, Coach?
The expected future conditions of our pavement are based upon, but not limited to, type and depth of base material, most recent date of construction, traffic, heavy traffic volume and drainage features.
Drainage stream, probably number one.
Do we want to continue to talk about pavement or move on to something else?
I think we should move on to the Sodom Road bridge. As you probably know, we've actually received a letter from the state saying that it's deteriorated to the point on the beams underneath that they recommended we reduce the weight limit down to 15 ton. Or we need to do some type of repair, whether it's a replacement or if it is a repair that could possibly be done by adding an extra, you know, 18 inches to the abutment wall on the south end. The north end is not far behind what they said, so...
Are they willing to push us along on their bridge list?
I haven't heard anything to that effect. I don't know, you know, I just know that we need to probably get the signs out immediately, as long as you guys are on board with that. I think we got both ends of Sodom and possibly at the end of New Road and then the bridge itself. But we need to let people know before we have an issue.
I agree. I am not a bridge engineer. Well, the state bridge engineers send us a letter that says we need to reduce the weight limit. I think we ignore it at our peril, okay? They made us aware, we need to get signs up.
And do we have the cost of a repair?
Yeah, the next, the next question is, any idea what it's, what it costs to do the recommended interim work to restore the...
I don't have an estimate prepared for that yet, but I had talked to... I don't have an estimate prepared for that yet, but I had talked to one of the state engineers that no longer is working for the state, he's retired, he estimated around $80,000, thought we could get a repair done that would buy us some time, again, it's only buying us time, it's not a permanent solution, because the spalling is gonna continue through those T-beams all the way across, right now it's just on the ends where it sits on the abutment wall, and what he's proposing was, if you add to both abutment walls 18 inches bigger, it comes out of those beams where we have the most spalling happening.
Right, it doesn't, it doesn't stop the problem, it just addresses what's at the end, it's like if you have a, a steel support beam that's rusting on the ends, if you support it a little further out, that takes the load off of that, but that doesn't prevent the rust from continuing to creep down the beams, right?
That's a $400,000 bridge project, I mean, if we're gonna 80/20 split with the state, and we're spending $80,000 on our repair, that's the equivalent of what we would spend on a $400,000 bridge project.
Right.
So, HEB's coming in on Monday, I think maybe we should talk about, are there other, I thought there were some other avenues for money for bridges.
Right, and, and what they had proposed is putting together some information with respect to a FEMA grant, but from what, from reading it...
FEMA money's going to Houston.
No, 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 that's, that's, that's different, I, you know, that's...
In Florida, huh?
Yeah, but Congress takes that up and deals with those chunks of money, as I read the information, it suggests that the way you get FEMA money is if you can demonstrate that you've had past storm events that have caused you additional repair work because of that bridge, so I may be misreading it, but they're looking for...
It's mitigation.
It's, it's mitigation, right, it's, you know, FEMA will give you money if you build a better bridge, if you build one that's higher or that's, that alleviates...
That's more volume or capacity.
Right, a flood issue, but the flood issue that you have to demonstrate is past flood, I think, and...
I would assume.
And so, that's the question that I have, is, do we have records that demonstrate that we've had flood issues and road repair issues, bridge issues associated with flooding in the past, and that, therefore, we wanna upgrade the bridge, not, not in terms of water flow capacity, not just take care of the structural issues, I don't know if we have those, and, and they're gonna be here and we can talk more with them about it, but I have no idea if, you know, in your experience, since you've been road agent, thinking about that bridge on Sodom Road, have we had storm-associated issues because of that bridge, or associated with that bridge?
That's my recognition, yeah.
We'd have a void problem, though, right?
Uh, well, yeah.
Remember, remember void, and we asked you to look into it?
Yep.
Void's caused by erosion, isn't it? So, there have been...
But that's a, I, I think what Bill's talking about is subsequent damage because of the bridge, not damage to the bridge, so, I don't, HEB's probably gonna enlighten us a lot more than we're...
I'm hoping, I'm hoping, but...
I'd be, I'd be averse to spending 80 grand.
I'm against a Band-Aid initially, I like your idea that if you're gonna do something, especially where there's an 80% return.
Yeah.
And if you, and if we can get the state to step up from 2025 to 2020, and I think we've been on good working relationships with them.
There may be some other things that happen.
And this current letter from the DOT on the bridge might provide us with an opportunity to have another conversation with the state bridge aid folks about, okay, so, you know...
We're not going towards failure.
Right, right, we have a more serious problem now, and maybe get some indication about, about moving up the...
So, put the signage up and we'll move forward.
Is there another item or two that you wanna discuss, that is a priority item with you?
I, not really, I guess, you did mention we had some more funds available for Lang Pond.
Yes.
There was a project that we started earlier this year that we had not completed, we had a rock that was sticking out into the road and blocking our drainage, we had that broken up, removed part of it, but when we tried to take the last big chunk out, the big tree behind it was starting to wiggle back and forth, so if you, and that tree looks like it's dying, I don't think it helped it by blasting next to it.
The only problem is that's not part of the warrant article, is it?
Uh, it's on the road front, it's somewhere along.
It's a mile rate to be removed from the...
Yeah, it's up the road for, it is a drainage issue, but...
Yeah, you have 10 trees left in the Lang Pond warrant article.
Do you have money in your budget to do that?
No.
He doesn't. He's not.
No, he doesn't, he's overspent, we've overspent a few lines to the $25,300.
Yeah.
And we've got $30,400 and some of the winter left, so in reality, you have 15 grand, so then you have to take your, all your other stuff and add it together, and the most I can come up with, Jim, is $45,000, that's what you've got left, outside of electricity and propane and all that normal native shit, but, you know, general budget, fall maintenance, stocks and bridges, and something else.
What I did is, I took all of his accounts and I revised them.
You have a lot more time than I do.
Right, and, and, yeah, through August 30th, you've spent $306,000, and you have $102,000 and change left, what I did is, and I'll give you a copy of it, is, it's a balance in each line, you know, for example, summer, we have $49,000 in, in winter maintenance, because we...
Booted around.
Okay, summer maintenance, you have $8,900 left, tree removal, you're already $7,900 over, but we had storms.
Yeah.
Fall maintenance, you took $5,000 out, so you only have $20,000 left there.
Which fall and winter's fall so closely together, yes.
Yeah, I don't think we...
That didn't actually make too big a difference.
No. I, I think we need to go back to the question you raised on Lang Pond Road, improvements to drainage on Lang Pond Road accrue to a benefit now in the area where we did the culvert replacement and the paving and all of that last year, so I can certainly support the things that we're doing to improve drainage on Lang Pond Road as it relates to putting money into the, into what's left in that, in that line.
It all ends up in the pond anyways, so, at the lake, so...
Everything is down there.
So, I, yeah, and I, I don't know how the other turnouts along the way are, if they, I know you've done a fair amount of work in the past on that.
Yeah, it's something we do every fall, so it's coming up when we do the grading usually.
Yeah.
The two issues I had that involved the warrant article is, do we do the speed signs? Have they been ordered?
I haven't, we haven't ordered those, we do have the narrow road ahead signs coming, or the one lane signs coming, we never came up with a speed limit on that, we, we talked about that, but I think we agree, we have to, so we still need to order that, but...
But what is a speed limit, is the question, right?
Yeah, I think you said that we would have to go through Chief's authority on that.
Certainly we could, to have the chief's input.
Yes. The other thing is under the warrant article, does it make sense to have that apron paved and reconstructed so the water goes into the appropriate place, did you get an estimate on that?
For the turnaround area?
Yes.
I have not, actually.
This, this is my thought, does it make sense to have a vendor remove the rocks, salvage what gravel has been piled up over the years, to add additional gravel, so, and you were gonna talk to Dave Ford about, about the rain garden?
Yes.
Doesn't it make sense for the water that puddles there now to go into the rain garden, so the energy in the water and the brown water get cleaned, so only the rain garden does its job, only pure water goes into the environment?
I like what you're thinking, I'm almost wondering if it wouldn't have to have like another, another rain garden on the far side of it, as opposed to trying to make it run uphill, I like what you're saying, it's probably...
Is there a vendor that would do, do it for us?
I'm sure.
I'm thinking of Lakes Region Paving, for example, they, they've worked low with you in the past.
Yeah.
Because if not, those encumbered funds disappear in another three months, 'cause it's a warrant article and they're encumbered.
I'm sure we can get that done, that's on the survey, we should get it done.
It was recommended to me that we reduce speeds something, or one way, is you go this way, put it on the first bridge abutment, then it acts as a marker for the snow plow, and the same the other way, and then same...
Here's, here's Brown Meissi, if you put a sign to mark the bridge abutment, is the sign sticking out where the plow's gonna hit it?
It is.
Okay, so you want the sign, the speed sign back a little bit, and just have a delineator up there marking it?
I'm just passing this on.
Sure.
And when you, I was also asked to pass on, when you, your guy with the grader redoes the road, both sides, it looks like just gravel, but that's, those are stone trenches.
Correct.
And if he makes a mistake and pushes the gravel into, guess what, the sand that goes down in and impacts the effect of...
We're pulling material from the edges out and then kind of spread it back, but...
And it may be that you need to add $1,000 to your budget for Lang Pond Road because you're gonna need gravel to be brought in, so you put the crown up, but you also may need to add a couple truckloads of stone each year to, you know, that was kind of unique engineering, and for every bit of dirt that goes in there, it just blocks the...
Yeah, I agree with that.
And it seems that the Purge Beach has survived well and has served its purpose, although, although I've seen two people trying to launch boats on trails there.
It's crazy.
So, you're currently working on your next year's budget?
I am, yes, I'm still trying to get some numbers back as, as well from...
Okay, trying to put an October 1st deadline or somewhere around there on the initial budgets and what's our national...
Do you know if the chief is ready to come in or not?
The other thing I wanna mention is, who was CIP project submissions?
Thank you.
I, I, we're supposed to receive today the painting quote, for sure, that's one of the CIP projects that we had, I think, or maybe that is it, I don't know, that's just building maintenance or not.
Depends upon...
The cost.
Yeah, where it goes, yeah.
The grading, that's for all the buildings, right?
Yes, yeah, I did ask him to put in three different...
Pinemized.
Yeah, and then I did talk to FR Carroll about the paving and stuff like that, but she said he could hopefully have an armpit for me from next...
For the, the yard?
Yeah, but the one thing he did recommend, 'cause he's seen this in, you know, in the past, instead of doing the front of the garage area that is currently paved, maybe we should have a 20-foot apron out of cement, so that you don't get the, you know...
We talked about that when we were up there, yeah.
We have it at the time, I didn't realize 20 feet, I was thinking like a four or five foot one, he recommended 20 feet, he said he sees it like in front of fire departments where you get the depressions, and then you have the standing water that freezes constantly.
That's what happened in that narrow area.
Yeah.
So, he recommends doing that.
Intensuration.
And, so I will put together an estimate for that, that is something that actually we can do, I have a couple guys that work for me that do some network on the side, and they have all the tools for that, and are very reasonable.
If we have a few moments before Andy shows up, what's the status of Moley, current bills and future?
Uh, right now, the bill, I'm still arguing a little bit, but we're at $4,050 for what I told them, or, 60 hours on it, they kind of, sure they have it, they did the math.
Is there anything we can do to assist you?
Um, not at this point, I will let you know if it looks like we can do something.
This is, I'll, I'll get back to capital project in a minute, we talked about eventually needing to replace that small truck.
Yes.
Right, so, of course, CIP's a 10-year forward look, I'm guessing sometime in the next 10 years, that truck is gonna be done.
I love it, too.
So, so we oughta see, please put a project in for replacement of that truck.
Something that came up Wednesday, and I put it in correspondence.
Okay.
And you'd be pleased with it, so...
All right, so, but, I, I don't know about this other thing, put a project in, if it, if, if it becomes overcome by events, great, but get it in, then at least it's...
You're absolutely right, but you might wanna read the paperwork, 'cause the grant that's available only covers diesel trucks that have not yet appeared on CIP, once you read what I, what I, what I came across, it will make sense to you.
Yeah, all right.
Moley, the companies you've dealt with in the past years have done nothing but just create problems for you, one went out of business and never told you, the equipment breaks down and all that, is there a, can we put this out to bid and see if there's a vendor that would do it?
Yeah.
I mean, you've just spent an important amount of time...
I have done that in the past, and it's been cheaper the way we've been doing it, and that's why we stuck with it.
But the point is, when was the last time all our roads were mowed?
They've all been mowed, just sometimes half one and half the next year.
The other thing is, all of these remaining things about buttonwood, road maintenance class, not weed, could you just respond and put it in writing, say it at the same time?
Do I have that taken off right there, or, I'm not sure that I've seen that one yet, unless, I think I've had them all separately, I mean, I did talk to the, the company, and we're talking, hopefully next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speed limit on Lang Pond Road, chief?
Yes.
Which should be...
45?
15?
Probably 25, but if we did that, we'd have to do a engineering study on it, you have to do a study if you're gonna put it below 30.
30, so...
Well, the engineering study doesn't have to, I'm gonna put it differently, yeah, it's a traffic study, it doesn't have to be engineered, we don't have to hire somebody to do it.
So, so how do we do a traffic study?
Um, well, we've done that in the past.
Is that one of those things across the road, we did that?
The town ordinance says 25 on all dirt roads.
It's not legal.
Who cares about that, right?
It's enforceable. State law says you have to, if you're going to post it below the statutory limits, you have to have a traffic study done. What we did on Tufton Borough Neck Road is we sat there and wrote down speeds of cars going by. If the trailer were working, we could do that, although I don't really have a, I don't really want to leave it on Lang Pond Road where it would be no houses nearby. But I mean, that's, we could do something like that, spend it some time, and then you pick the 85th percentile of the cars and look at it and say that's typically where your speed should be, it's around that. That's typical...
So we need to drive that way every slow every day?
We'll tell you when, so you can go slow back and forth.
There's a file on this, because when the original Lang Pond Road committee got together, we actually did a survey.
Okay.
And you were part of that and...
So it, that, but, yeah, that's what you have to do if it's, if you're going to go below the statutory limit of 30 or 35.
Because we actually changed the speed limit and then upped it again.
Is this study very time consuming, take a long time, a long number of calendar days?
Probably not, no.
Okay, no.
We didn't spend that much time doing the Tufton Borough Neck one.
Is it easily specific, or does it matter?
It doesn't matter. The law just says you have to do a traffic study. It does not give you any kind of a, you know, you need to be, have your PE degree, you know, stamp or any of that stuff, it just is...
And you can use the county by the Lakes Region planning, correct?
I don't know if they get speeds with that, they just might get traffic counts for that.
They got seven different variables. They think of how many...
If they can do that, that is doable.
Bicycles.
That's a possibility.
And I think we got it for like $50 because we're a member. The only thing is, the state hires them to do the county, and we need to give them some...
But we can, I mean...
I know there's a folder that's packed away some...
Obviously, if you put a cruiser and do it though, you're kind of having the outside influence on it, like we, that's what we did with Tufton Borough Neck Road. We sat a cruiser inside the road and just...
And they slow down because your county...
As you see, that's the only, somebody, but it just says you have to have a traffic study to base it on, you do not have to...
So is that something you can do within, say, the next couple of weeks?
Yes.
And so then we would be in a position where we could identify a speed limit and get it posted?
Yeah. That can be done in the next couple of weeks.
Yep. On your checklist.
The other thing, I think Lloyd mentioned this before, was like stats on some of the part A, part crimes and stuff, some of that. And so what we've had to do is last year they passed a law to require incident-based reporting, reports that are sent to the state police, which then go to the FBI. It's kind of, I hadn't done it for a while because I got kind of frustrated when they took one that was like seven or eight years old or something and said, you've got to fix it, but even before I started here, and I couldn't fix the report.
You also had computer issues, remember that?
Yeah, so I, but because they've changed the law, I'm in compliance with it, I've been doing it, that's why I spent a couple days this week working on, because they needed it by a certain date, and then there were errors that I couldn't clear, and questions I had. Anyway, I got them in, and then they sent me back, the state gets it, then they review it, they ask for fixes, then the FBI gets it, then they may ask for fixes. Anyway, that's the NIBR's National Incident Base Reporting System. Similar to, it's part of the Uniform Crime Reports, UCR statistics. I can also generate the UCR statistics, so I'll start, now that I know we're back on track again, and I'll start doing that again.
Would you consider doing the following, I'm not trying to micromanage?
Yeah.
Would it make sense every week for us to get a copy of the activity? And the reason I ask this is, I go to other police departments, you know, in my juvenile work, and dispatch prints that up for them. And kind of like a, in the newspapers?
We can generate a lot.
List the activity, and my thinking is, is the following. The public is thirsty, in my opinion, for that information. I'm the one, I'm one of three guys in the room, who know how busy and how active your guys are. But I don't think the public realizes that. I'm wondering if we could try it for a couple of months, and if you were to come to us in December and say, you know, this has caused my secretary to spend two hours a week doing it. If you like the idea, hey, I'm going to add it to my budget. I mean, what are your thoughts on that? Am I being articulate enough, number one?
Yeah, no, we used to do that. At one point, I used to do that and release it every week, I think, to sort of be in the grand. There were some, it was good, mostly positive, a few negative comments, but mostly positive. It's not, we'll try it again, we'll work on it again.
The other thing is that it gets too expensive. I'm sure I could find someone who would donate some time, you know, who would pass criminal background checks or whatnot. It's just, it's just a thought here, so... I know, I'll give you two examples, and Lloyd Wood is merely speaking for Lloyd Wood. Friends have told me that there was a situation on one of the islands involving a knife.
Well, yeah, it was reported as that, but it turned out it didn't involve a knife, but it was reported as involving a knife, so we had to go as, that was the situation that it was. It turned out much less, thankfully.
Another example is...
It doesn't matter whether it was actually what it was, you responded based on what was reported.
What we're reporting, that's how we responded.
In an appropriate way, and if it had been, then you were prepared to deal with it. And so, you know, it doesn't... It's like a call out on an alarm, right? You go out, regardless of whether it's a false alarm or something, you're still responding and dealing with whatever the issue is. If it's a real world situation, then you handle it. If it's a nuisance, then you're still, you're still there. You went prepared to deal with the situation.
There's another situation I'm thinking of that's circulating in Melbourne, that there was an arrest by someone for a guy, I don't know if it was sexual predator or pornography or whatnot. And I'm thinking in the communication, is, and you're, I'll take a step back. You are excellent at crafting a public release that doesn't violate the people's rights, you know, doesn't violate the defendant's rights. And it takes time, I know that, but I'm just wondering if... Do you understand where I'm coming from?
I know what you're saying.
And my motives are honorable.
Yeah, no, I...
You guys are busy and you're professional, but...
Yeah, no, I get what you're saying.
And this is just me talking, I'm not trying to speak for the board. You know, I think the statistics are important, I use them. And, you know, for example, the July and August statistics, you know, things that you give us, I know they're coming.
I gave them, I want to think. And August just ended Wednesday, so they're not... I'll talk to Vicki, but I can't have that done.
No, I'm only speaking for myself. I use those and whatnot, but I do not speak for the board, so... Please give it some thought.
Crime is done.
Some, yes.
Yes.
Can I bring up another thing? Job performance reviews, are they?
They're done, I haven't reviewed them with the people yet, so they're done, on my desk, I haven't gone over them with everybody yet. So then, as soon as I recap everybody's comments back and forth, I'll turn them in.
And budget, how are you doing on that?
Starting to work on that. I had, like I said, I had to get the NIBR's on, I had to get exculpatory evidence scheduled, information done, that was kind of time consuming for the AG's office, and then I had to, you know, policy in place on that, but I am starting on the budget process. I talked to Tom Albert yesterday, because our server is, I found a way to, remember, it was like $19,000 to transfer our data, I found a cheaper way to address that, much cheaper, like $100.
Can we do it this year?
Well, no, because I still need it, I'd say it's $100. They will charge $100 to set it up on another computer, so I still need to do the other computer. If I get, Tom's supposed to give me a price to replace the server, I need my server replaced, and when he does that, then we'll transfer it over to, may even keep it on the old server, as a matter of fact.
I mean, to me, a computer is like having a radio or a mess or a... And, you know, you've made do as long as you can, so...
Yeah, the server's just not going to be, it's $100 for the cost of the support to transfer it over, it's, I've got to buy some hardware.
Is that a one-time price, or is it a monthly?
That's a one-time price, it's done. It's set up, yeah, it's a lot cheaper, so it's just a matter, you know, Tom's been busy, and where he's been here, I haven't been here, because I had something else going on, so I haven't met up with him. Talked to him yesterday, because I am having a server issue, he's kind of supposed to call me today about what to work on. It's not doing proper backups for some reason, so stopped.
Okay, I had a couple of other things. New cruiser ready to be put in service?
The 18th that goes down, we're waiting for parts, waiting for parts, waiting for parts, and I've been bugging them, and they finally got the last stuff in.
Who are you doing business with?
2A Communication in Newington.
Is there anything the selectmen can do to assist you?
Nope, it's just, it was a matter of them getting the...
We listed the old cruiser.
Yep.
Has that, any bites on that yet?
I've had a call from the guy who bought the Impala, and I, actually I've had two calls asking about it. One person asked me the values, I can't tell you that, but...
Look it up. Yeah, right. KBB.
But the guy from Chicago Motors, he's the guy, I think he's the one who won the Impala last year, he called, I had to send him some pictures.
You mean the guy that bought the last Tahoe too?
I heard he was interested, but I don't, I don't know.
All right, I mean, yeah, I want to say that he bought a couple of vehicles for us, right?
Yeah, he wasn't interested in the sedans, but the SUVs he was interested in. I've heard that anecdotally through his daughter, to my daughter, to me, so... So we'll see if, what happens.
So the performance report, you figure you'll have by the end of the month, or?
That should happen within like a week.
Okay, so that part's done.
Yeah.
And the budget is, 1st of October, a...
I'll get it done, I'll get it done.
New cruiser going to be marked?
Yes.
You have those decals?
Yep, I actually had them. They arrived like on Friday, and the original date for the setup was Monday, so I left them in the box. But you're supposed to take them out and stretch them out, because they just print them and they curl them and they ship them. And so I was waiting for that date, waiting for that date, so finally, like a week or two ago, I stretched them out in the basement so they're flat again, and I'm probably going to talk to, in fact, we made one call to an auto body shop about putting them on.
Who does Adam use to do his decals and whatever?
I don't know, he was at one point using a guy...
Wasn't he over on Chickville Road?
There was a guy on Chickville Road he used. I'm not sure if some...
I'm not trying to micromanage.
No, I'll talk to him and get that name. We did get one name from somebody in Wakefield, and we did talk to Weston Auto, they've done it before. And we've actually had 2A do it on the last cruiser, but I'll have somebody else do it.
Status of the radar trailer, you know?
Yeah, the radar trailer. For some reason, the batteries are dead and won't take a charge, and the new batteries, so I can...
Sure, it's somewhere.
Yeah, there's something going on in there that wasn't just the batteries, I think, so I need to, when they come, I don't want to, the company that fixes them is out of Maine, and they also certify our radars, so what I'll do is, I'll have them when they come out to the...
Combine the...
Combine one trip to do both things. That's why I hasn't gone back out there. I can't get the batteries to take a charge, I've tried a charger on them, separate from that charger that's connected in the trailer, it won't take a charge from anything, so there's something happened to them. I mean, they're new batteries from this spring, so they're under warranty, but something, something else is going on there.
Parking ordinance?
They're working on that.
And there's still three different signs?
And I did contact...
You park your boats at 11 o'clock and then 10 o'clock, and here's where you tied up all the loose engine, you're very good at that, making sure. Is your recommendation that we go to town meeting with a package? What are your thoughts?
I think if we're going to change it, yes. I, personally, I kind of think it's worked. Yes, we have a couple weekends where it gets jammed up, but we, I think we try and work with the stickers and warn people and kind of badger people into compliance, if you will, rather than being hammers and handing out $100 tickets. I mean, I know some towns have told me how many thousands of dollars they've made in there, when I was inquiring about their ordinance, it says, oh yeah, we make this many thousand, I'm like, hmm, that's not how I want it.
Would your advice be that this is not an issue to disturb the population?
We have two weekends a year, I think, I would, I guess I'm waiting for the state to decide what they're going to do on the signage too, down in 19 Mile Bay.
Nice correspondence we had from them, there was confusion in the old ordinance about...
Yeah.
Where the no parking, so...
Everything's in that appointment folder.
So it's, basically it's on us now, we have to...
And you sent a letter, and I gave the distance to you, didn't I?
We have things in there, but I can't...
I assume, from reading it, that they're talking about, our ordinance is what they're putting the signs up based on?
No.
No?
No, we, the selectmen say that, as I took it from them, they based it upon what the selectmen requested. They will look at it.
Yeah.
If the selectman requests, if the town says, we don't want parking in this area because it's a problem.
Right.
They'll take a look at it, and if it fits with what they feel, they have to write administratively and go through their administrative process to do it on the state roads.
Right, okay.
But they want the selectmen to be on board, because they don't want to be hanging themselves out there.
So it's their, it's their rule, but based on our request?
Yes, and we did, you did send the letter to them.
I'm issuing it.
Yeah, and then I gave, they asked for a distance, and I gave that to you, I think?
The email, I believe.
So if they're, so what we need to do is send them a letter that says, we request no parking along Route 109 in the following locations, from here to here.
Yeah, I think we did...
From here to here, I, we may, I haven't seen, I don't remember seeing it.
We did it through email on the distances, because they asked for something a little clearer. I know I went out and...
He's looking at it now, I think.
Paste it off.
Now, I understand that part of their letter was that they're reviewing the file.
Right, and I talked to them.
And there's not a lot of continuity in Tufton Borough as a whole.
Yeah, they called it Bennett Road.
Yeah, right, so we need to give them a current request for what we would like to see as no parking areas.
And I, I thought I...
And it ought to be, my, my idea is it ought to be a letter that, you know, not, okay, so it's unclear here, we'll send you an email and says this, you know. So we put it together in one piece of correspondence that says, this is what we request.
Okay.
And... So it's all wrapped up, and there isn't any, you know, well, attach this one over here and that one over there. So as it relates to the town parking ordinance, I know we have several things there. And so, and the way that that gets fixed probably is that we, we adopt a revised ordinance that supersedes all of that.
Probably, yes.
Right? And is that something you can draft?
Yep.
And then we can have a hearing and get it done and be done with it?
Yep.
Because parking is...
For now.
Well, parking is something that doesn't have to go to town meeting.
Right.
The selectmen...
I'm sure when the permit thing was put together, that was thought to be a thing, and it sort of, doesn't seem to have worked out.
Well, I think we changed, it said it had to be a sticker located in a certain spot, and we realized, well, that was kind of burdensome, and you have people that change cars that want to hang tags, so we changed our process without necessarily changing the written part of the process, and went with it, if you will. I can, I can put something together.
All right.
I'll get that.
Andy, I would be happy to work with you back and forth between the two of us and bring something to the board.
And to consistency on the signs, that's clarity on that. I mean, something like that would be good.
So we, so when we're clear about what it is that we... So we, so when we're clear about what it is that we want, and, and we, we bring an ordinance forward, then we can adopt the ordinance and be clear with the signage that matches the ordinance. So there aren't, you're looking at this sign, it says that, you're looking at that sign, it says something else.
Inconsistency. So it's the same.
Right.
Another thing is, um, we had a lengthy conversation about community policing, community relations.
Yep.
And you were gonna come up with a list of-
I gave you, well, I gave you a list of some of the stuff, where we had that, we exchanged that list and you had to read it. And, um, October fourth is National Coffee with a Cop Day. However, I went to the, and I'm also, as part of the chiefs, and in fact, I, I got a call earlier, I gotta call him back, our detective director. Typically, the first week in October is Community Policing Week nationwide, and, but it's always been done by presidential decree making it, and there isn't one so far this year. So I was, the debate is whether or not I, who I write to, who I write to to get that going. Should I write to the senators, or should I write to the White House, or how do I, how do I get that ball rolling? But anyway, um, so I did list some of those things that we are doing. Um, I haven't heard any more about child safety seat training. I'll reach out to her again to find out what, is she supposed to set up this fall. Um, reading the Coffee with a Cop website, I mean, it's, we don't really have the location to do it, but I'll try and do something for it that day anyways. Uh, because what they recommend is you have a fast food restaurant that has turnover, so people come in and come and go. We don't-
It's a Tufton Borough.
Yeah, that's about the closest we got. But yeah.
Not that fast, but it's, what do you do, I gotta-
Um, and, you know, I know, because, you know, Manchester is doing it with, um, McDonald's. I mean, so it's, obviously, something like that is quick, easy, you have a lot of, you know, foot traffic in, so it works. But we'll put something together on that. Um, I did do the Old Home Week stuff.
There's an event planned, uh, for October twenty-first between the Parks and Rec and the school, um, fall festival, if you will.
Okay.
The great location for-
I'll talk to him about that. Um, and the twenty-eighth is Officer Drug Takeback Day again, uh, the DEA one, so I sent the letter requesting waivers for that day.
To do it up at the transfer station?
We'll do it up at the transfer station again.
Excellent, excellent.
Is that September or October?
October twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
No, I, uh, on drug takeback, I've read, uh, a lot great deal of respect to your thoughts and comments on the drug box.
It's just not, I don't think it's workable from where we're at right now.
Uh, you know, you're absolutely right. I've had a couple of other communities that I'm in, you know, listen to what we talked about. They say, you know, you just don't need the wrong element trying to get into it, because this is not me in twenty-four seven.
Right.
You know, and I'm thinking, I'll be candid here, I'm thinking the people who work here don't need issues.
But, I mean, obviously, it's-
I thought, I thought it was well-presented and well-fired.
I mean, obviously, as we look at a new station, if that comes to fruition, that should, I certainly would want one in the lobby. That'd be, that'd be great. That'd work, because it'd be a secure location under my, under the police department control. You should have, you know, obviously, you'd have video monitoring for the building anyways, you should. That would be just another, you'd monitor your lobby anyways, so it'd be covered. Uh, there'd be no cost other than getting a box as opposed to, I mean, I'll still, I'm still gonna make a trip to San for one of these days, take a look and see if that's a doable thing, but.
Does, are you aware of any other small-town police departments in our state that have a drop box?
Not our size, no.
I asked the same question, Norm, off the top of the head.
As I pointed out in my memo, Wolfboro doesn't have one.
Yeah, but-
I mean, I'm not saying-
Wolfboro has other issues, okay?
I, I'm not saying that, that you, you, but I mean, they, they have more staff, they have twenty-four hour staffing, they have monitored lobby, I mean, all these things.
As you pointed out before, there've been some other issues with respect to drugs in the Wolfboro Police Department. So that may have something to do with, with where they're at. No, I'm, 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 I'm not thinking of larger towns. I'm thinking of towns, you know, similar to us, uh, and the, the, uh, the visibility that these, that these drop boxes get suggests there's a great benefit to them. I don't, that may be all out of, um, proportion to what the real benefit is.
I think there's a benefit. I do. The, but with every, it's kinda like, I had a discussion with somebody on body cameras the other day. I think there's a great, the great's all great benefit, but there's costs. You have to have somebody that monitors that, somebody to make sure it's working. Like, we have one of our video systems not working properly, so I've got a message into the manufacturer, which I think is in the Houston area, so they're probably explaining why they're not gonna back to me right now. My point is, there's, with everything you got, there's another thing you have to keep running and feed that, that either the money, time, or-
Sure.
There are practical issues, yes.
Um, with that box, you have to have two people that, and they shouldn't be the chief, that have the key to it to access it. Um, that, in my opinion, shouldn't be the chief, should be two other officers that have the key to it. Otherwise, if I'm one of the people with the key and stuff's missing, how do I do an internal investigation? But I think the only, I may be wrong on this, but I'm not, I don't think Wakefield has one. The only towns I think that have drop boxes are Mulberry and Conway in the county. I'm not-
Those are the only two I know of.
I, yeah. I don't think anybody else has them. Um, that's, I, Center Harbor doesn't.
And they're all publicly accessed. I mean, they don't check your citizenship when you drop your drugs.
No, and, and that's part of the rules, is we can't check.
Right, so, I mean, a Tufton Borough resident could go to Mulberry.
Exactly.
You know, it's-
And I've referred people to that. I've referred people to, I thought at one point, Wolfboro used to still do it, even though they didn't have a box, but we don't. They just, because they have the two hundred collection dates, which were a lot confused, too, to our, the lighting and house appliances, but.
Can I shift gears?
Yes.
My compliments, over the years, you have patience of Joe, but new police station.
Yeah.
Uh, we got a letter from the library trustees, Gordon, and he was passing it on to us, and it was a letter he received from Skip Hurt. And in that, Skip Hurt listed a number of different things, and he quoted you, as you've done some research on cost for new buildings, cost per square foot and, and all of that. Um, made, made a lot of sense. Um, I'm just, I'm wondering, is, and it's a balancing act on your part. You're not trying to assert or jump in line or anything like this, but could you give us a paragraph of some information or what you think, or what you-
Well, Skip has been in contact with Andre, quotes, working with the library. Skip had an idea of, um-
Doing both projects.
Doing both projects. He also had an idea of setting a, a cost, if you will, um, as kind of the guide, as opposed necessarily the-
I gotta jump in. I mean, I, I appreciate the research, and let's get some cost figures together. Let's go, if the library's gonna put an addition on, that's great.
Yeah.
We are not gonna do it the way the library's doing it. We are going to put this on the street for bits, or we're gonna have some real talk, because Andre's not gonna just waltz in here and get another job. I don't think they're being fiscally prudent by not putting that job up for bit, but we don't have any say in that matter. But we do have a say in the police department, and we are gonna do that properly. We're not gonna just ride the coattails of the library and get a police station built at whatever it costs. I mean, I'm, I'm not prepared to be a party to that.
So, to finish where it's going with that, so he was trying to make it, wanted Andre to sharpen his pencil some and also kind of set a maximum cost, or set a cost, if you will, which, uh, we had bantered back and forth, and Andre's supposed to get back to me when he gets back from, he's got a vacation and he's working on some other projects. But in the meantime, I talked to, uh, Rollinsford Chief, and they're in the process of going through stuff, getting a new station, and they're not a lot larger than us, a little bit. Um, and they got a very favorable cost per square foot, three different methods of building it. I think there were two different contractors they looked at. They were design-built, which has some reservations, and that the, the, but the, the other part of it that I cautioned Skip about those numbers on was that they were for the building. They were not for, uh, not turnkey, not, uh, any construction management or site supervision that you might pay for separately. You know, I have a, what do you call it, a job, uh-
Clerk of the Works.
Yeah. Clerk of the Works on site to manage it, to make sure that they are following the plans.
Following the plans.
Yeah, yeah.
So how much was the square foot cost?
Depending, there were three styles they looked at. Um, the one that I think the chief was leaning towards is about two hundred dollars a square foot. But again, that was building, no radios, no phones, no furniture.
Is this, is this something you could put in paragraph form to us?
Yeah.
Because you've just educated anyone who would be listening to this, understand-
The three, the three methods he looked at, um, and I don't know what they all involved either, but it was a much bigger building than what we're talking about, and it was, the cost was a surprise. Uh, two hundred dollars a square foot was insulated concrete forms, the styrofoam forms poured, which apparently Farmington did for their, uh, police fire facility. Uh, they used, it was through growing construction out of Rochester. Um, they also got a bid stick built, a little cheaper than that, it was one seventy-five a square foot through growing. I think it was New England Homes modular, which had chunks of it come in, not, it's not just one modular, like a house, but it was, that was even, uh, cheaper than that. As a, I wanna say that was one sixty a square foot. That included, I think, the site work, um, included the site work, I'm not sure.
Wire and plumbing.
Yeah, wire and plumbing. Um, they had-
Interior finish?
Interior finish. What it doesn't include is your video, your audio, your alarm, your phone system.
Desk furniture.
Desk furniture, moving costs, clerk of the works, um, uh, and they also, I can't remember.
How many square feet did your original plan have?
I think it was forty-nine hundred.
So five thousand square feet, at two hundred dollars a square foot.
It's a million.
A million bucks. So, I mean, you got another-
Round number.
Fifty percent, so you're a million and a half.
Oh, I don't think it's that much more for the rest of the stuff. Do you? For the clerk of the works, or anything?
I don't know.
I would, I mean, your phone system's probably a ten thousand dollars, alarm system probably in the same, ten, fifteen thousand. I mean, you're probably less than a hundred thousand, I would think. I don't know what the clerk of the works would be, but-
You got another ten grand in bond, so, yeah. Well, you do a clerk of the works, you do a building manager.
Yeah, I don't know how that, how they work.
But that's still a cost, so it's, you know.
Is there something you could work on?
I can, yeah, I'll talk to-
You had seventy percent architectural fees, or was that included?
That's included, because it's a design build. They, the, the contractor, design build, they do the plans and all that, and then they build it, rather than having a separate architect. It argues both ways, but.
Yeah, so there's no, um, there's no architect involved, so you-
Right, the engineering is done by the-
How do you do a change order?
That's a good question. I don't know. I, I-
What was the question?
How do you do a change order in that situation? You don't have that architect to balance it off.
Right, I know.
I'm just wondering how that works.
And I, that's the, the thing. When we were on that committee years ago, and we looked at some places, and they, they had gone through the design, the design build process, they're, some of them were kind of, they're, I mean, it's cheaper, it's cheaper, but any savings they can get go to the contractor, not to the-
Right.
-town, and, and sometimes, where was it? Was that what happened in Wakefield?
Wakefield, right.
Wakefield, because they had one switch, well, they had, you have to, by electric code, you have certain lights on at night, while they ran one circuit with, like, all of the lights at night.
Yeah.
So they ended up with a pretty expensive electric code, because they had to come back and fix it.
The jail was a design build.
Yeah.
And they ended up with aluminum wiring, tried the place, had to tear it all out, and it cost a ton of money, but, and then by that time, the contractor-
And they have a wall that, uh-
Yeah, the wall was falling out.
I mean, it's not to say it can't work, but you have to, I think you need a strong clerk of the works, somebody looking over it, if you're-
Yeah, and I'm not certain it does work in this situation, when you get up into the million dollar range, whether or not you're better off getting a, a plan that you, you like, and then a, um, building management company, and then you, the savings in order to the town as opposed to-
At the contractor.
But it's a good number to have. I mean, if we're looking at a million two, a million three, whatever that number is.
Sure.
That's what a police station's gonna cost.
Yes.
They're, they've taken eight hundred thousand dollars off the table for the library, because that, that was gonna be the police station. So it's essentially another five hundred grand.
Yeah, that was the figure.
That's, um-
So hopefully, they've saved five hundred so that it all washes out.
Right.
That's, um, yeah, because I, I, I knew he was go, I knew Rollinsford was going through the process, and they're not, I wanna say their population's twenty-eight hundred, it's, but they're, obviously, they're, they have a little different dynamic. They're between, you know, Dover and all that, but it is, it's now not much larger than us. They have maybe two more full-time officers. Um, they're putting, and, but they're putting a six thousand square foot building in versus the, uh, versus the forty-nine hundred.
Forty-nine included Sally Port and all.
There's including a Sally Port, separate from a four-car garage. They put a four-car garage in. We were having a combined Sally Port garage, is how we were looking at it.
And as I understand, the last committee that I was on with you, that is a functional design. It doesn't have every light switch and whatnot, but it was a concept, right?
A conceptual floor plan. Yeah, it's a floor plan, a conceptual floor plan. It wasn't down to the, you know, you couldn't go price it necessarily on that, per se, because you don't have-
Right.
Whatever, do that and what sits, and what the specs are for the windows, that sort of stuff. But you can get a rough, if you're looking at just cost per square foot, you get an idea, a rough idea anyways. They have, um, Rollinsford, and I think, I can't remember now, I think they have water to the site, but not sewers. But that was obviously another big cost potential there. But they, they only have to do one of the two. I can't remember which right now. So it wasn't as big a deal as I thought it would be. But it's, you know, but it is, like, it, that was a thing I found out, too, is, and that's just gotta watch with some of these numbers. That's the building. They still have to factor in all these other-
Right. And, you know, I, my personal opinion is, we don't wanna have to go through this exercise or have other people go through it every fifteen or twenty years. We need to build a thirty or forty year, year building first, and so why, uh, a monitor that's gonna wear out in twenty years?
Excellent point.
Doesn't make any sense.
Excellent point. Well, you certainly have a tricorder within the county, but the nursing home there is just a spectacular-
Fast heading.
Yeah.
It's a rate on going.
So, so it goes in how much?
It works. What it did over there works.
Yeah, and there's no reason that you can't still save money and build something really good.
And that's, and, and so that's where he, he, you know, Chief DeSharm had gone through, talking with Groan, who built Farmington's PD. I haven't seen that yet, but I, that's what, he was, he seemed impressed with that. The, the cost savings with the, he, Chief DeSharm felt that the cost savings of the insulated-
Concrete block.
Insulated, ICF.
Yeah.
ICF.
Right.
Um, would offset the higher cost of-
Oh, yeah, those things are enormous, amazingly efficient.
And so-
Bulletproof.
Yeah. So, anyway, he, he seemed to be living. I think, if they were up to him, that, from the way he talked, that would probably be his ideal anyways.
The downside is adding to it. So you really, well, you can. You just have to plan on it. So when you build the initial building, if twenty-five years from now you wanna add something to it, it's, it's great. You have access, and you have your septic and whatever in the right place.
So that's, that's another, someday I'll, I wanna take a trip down and talk to Chief Drury about, you know, seeing what they've got there. But, and that was done by Groan also, so it's not like, uh, uh, you know, Groan made the two offers to Rollinsford You know, Groen made the two offers to Rollinsford on both options, sort of going to a point of bids, there's, there's other options, not just bound, if you will.
Yeah, well, you just keep a people honest, I mean, the idea of not putting it on the street, even if you're married to the guy, you put it on the street just to keep him honest, I mean, people are as honest as they have to be. And if you don't ask them, you, they'll do whatever they think is right, and it may not be below those costs, so. That's my perspective.
Anything else with the chief?
I don't think so.
I guess.
All right. Folks, we had, we had a target date of September 8th for Koha, that will probably be next meeting, a decision.
Yeah, didn't, didn't we decide that we were gonna talk about that in a public?
Yes, yeah, I defer to that, I mean.
Yeah. I'm more comfortable doing that on Monday than I am today.
I, I think that's great.
I think the only one here is that one-eyed camera.
Yes, right.
So if there is any public input that looks.
Sure.
I mentioned the event of the, so just briefly, and then I'll bring it back up when we have more info in the room, if you'd like. But Parks and Rec has an interesting off, look, and we're running two sets of books here.
Yes.
And, so there's $15,000 if you accumulate.
In their revolving fund.
Yeah, which is, I suppose, maybe just a little complex. It just. Normally, what would happen would be that they've got $6,000 or $7,000 worth of expenses for events. And that's, that would be a line item in their regular budget, and then the money would come in, and that would go back into the general fund. That's not the way it's set up, which is okay, I guess. But now the use of that 15,000, I think, needs to come to this table, as opposed to being just at that Parks and Rec table. Only because those people are volunteers. If somebody takes umbrage with where that money went, or what scholarship, or what, whatever. They shouldn't have to take the heat for that, I mean, that, that's an executive decision, that's something we need to take the heat for. Because right now, I'll give you a for instance, there's a planned event at the school on October 21st, which is a fall festival. Ostensibly to raise money to do the sixth-grade class trip. And what they're looking for, what the parent teachers are looking for, is for Parks and Rec to be involved as partners in this deal. And then they're gonna charge an entrance fee, and hopefully raise money, and we're gonna do whatever Parks and Rec is gonna do, they, they can afford about, probably, 300, I can. And my thought would be that, I mean, realistically, I don't think they're gonna raise enough money unless every single kid in town goes to the thing, and probably they won't. And they all pay the $5 entrance fee, I mean, if we've got money left over, and we're giving it to the, to scholarships, I'm wondering if we shouldn't just have Parks and Rec sponsor something like that.
I think you have to go back to the article that authorized that fund be set up. And, which has been since I've been in town.
Yeah, I'm sure it's been.
And, and we can go back to the RSA, and, and better understand how those things, the benefit is, it's an in-and-out, so when they collect fees for swim lessons and that sort of thing. That's a place that the money goes, and that money is available to purchase things associated with the program.
Right.
So.
But now they've.
My.
They've expanded a bit.
Yeah, so, so I guess my. What I wonder is, if we're talking about finding places for this money, because we have too much money in the fund. Then, why do we have too much money in the fund? It's supposed to be sort of an in-and-out thing.
Well, that, and, and I'll, I'll explain how, why that happened, and it's gonna continue to happen, is that you, they come up with an idea, let's take the concert series. And all of a sudden, they've generated $4,000 of profit. Because they've charged admission, and then they've caught, you know, you take your costs off of what your, what your revenue is. An old home, old home day, it's gone from being, you know, a few people showing up to have a picnic at the fire station, to actually.
A weekend.
Yeah, it's a, it's a moneymaker. If that concert ser, and this is the first year of the concert series, if they just double it over the next three years, you're talking $10,000 worth of revenue after expenses. So that's where that's changed. And I'm okay with them generating revenue and doing all of these great things, I think it's just a matter of us, and I guess the, the way it's ha, happened in the past, is. Parks and Rec has decided, okay, we're gonna loosen up five grand of this money and give it to the trustees of the trust fund, and then distribute it for scholarships or whatever. So that's an issue I think we need to talk about, the other one is, when you start having a $5,000 event, you need a cash box. You know, now we've got a cash situation where they're setting up a cash box, and it's, it's sort of outside the realm of, of this town organization to a certain degree. It has no cash controls on it currently, so it's just, I'm not trying to make a problem, I'm just describing.
Other communities, other communities like Ashland have had problems, because they weren't, didn't have the foresight that you have.
I mean, I think it's just like three grand in that, like you said, for the swim program, that's one thing, but when you start having big events, and they start creating cash. And we are sitting at $15,600 in cash, which seems like a lot of money to me for a Parks and Rec.
As, as I understand it, there were two special accounts that were created at town meeting. One was the conservation commission, you know, it comes off of land use tax, five grand a year. And the other one was the rec, and it was for special projects, now, I'd have to reexamine it again, like you said. There are two accounts that are revolving accounts. One Diane, there's one Diane has, that when people come in, people, we, we put, do something with the cemetery corner post, and then the person comes in and reimburses us. Another one is, street signs need to go up on private roads. They come in with the check, then we off, it goes to buy the sign post, and get, and another one is the special events account for the police department, that's in and out. But those were set up exactly what you're talking about, under our current structure, with the board of selectmen, knowledgeable and supporting, and there's accountability.
I mean, the, the computer issue, though, you know, with, with Parks and Rec, which, I mean, there's no malice involved.
Right.
But they had money enough in their checkbook to go buy a computer, and they went and bought a computer. So we didn't have a really solid policy in place for.
But that computer was not bought out of regulatory content.
It was reimbursed out of, out of the Parks and Rec budget, so.
Yes, right, it was, it was, it was regular, it was, it was out of the regular Parks and Rec budget, it wasn't out of the, the bombing fund.
Right, right.
So that had nothing to do with whether those money.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't, I mean, it's the psychology of operation, I mean, I'm sitting here with my budget, I've got 15 grands over here. Obviously, I can't dip into it for this, but it takes the, the operating budget.
It's called accountability, it isn't talking about efficiency.
It's the psychology of budget, but at any rate.
And there's no malice involved.
No, but I think the, the Parks and Rec does a great job, but they just, they just wanna do more. It, it just seemed a little odd to me, and maybe I'm just.
Yeah. So, well, it would seem to me that if that's money that's collected, associated with programming, then it's money that you then spend on programming.
Right, well, when you start ratcheting up that, that 15 grand of whack, I mean, what are we buying? I mean, and that, that question came up, it's, it's do we buy all-in floats, do we, well, we are gonna increase the number of lifeguards, but that's not coming out of that.
No.
Do we bump up the concert series? All we're done, all we've done then is, now we're gonna increase our revenue, and now we've got more money to spend, it's, or do we sponsor kids to summer camp? Do we sponsor kids to Wolfboro programs, whatever?
Just so you understand, you have my support, when you're at those meetings, please continue to represent the selectmen and understand.
Well, how much do you guys wanna get involved in that decision-making, I guess that would be my question? Or do you think that the, that the war on America, or whatever it was, prevents us from getting involved in it?
Let's examine the war on America.
Yeah, I think we need to go back and look at, yeah. Yeah, at the art, language in the article, and, and RSA's, as it relates to those things, and understand better. What the, what the situation is. I mean, if it's set up as something totally under them, then I don't think we wanna step in the middle of it. If. If, if the sources and uses are out of whack, which maybe it sounds like a little bit here, then how do you remedy that?
And maybe there's some right reassessment on both sides, and we come to a new.
Yeah, I mean, they're fine with whatever we decide to do, I mean, it's just, and what is the, what are the trustees of the trust fund gonna do with the extra 10 grand that they're gonna get this year? I mean, that's.
Yeah. Right.
That's what happened last night.
Okay, and you were here for a good long time?
Yeah, but at least we got the budget part done, and I think it's gonna. It'll work out, we made a long discussion about lifeguards, and. I have the unfortunate circumstances of having been married into the law for 45 years, so. The only way to avoid liability at the beach, there are only two ways, the one is to have a lifeguard there, and the one is to have no lifeguards, and a notice that there's never any lifeguards here. And we're sort of in between those.
Yes, we are.
And we could, for about $1,500, I think, in the budget, have five daily cards. I think we're in a much better position from a liability standpoint. And. There was another line that we could cut for about $3,000, and so I think it's not affecting the budget adversely, but I think it was.
Is the lifeguard issue also partly getting the personnel?
Well, part of, yeah, part of it's getting them, but they didn't advertise this year for until late, and, so I think there's some structural issues.
On the other hand, the board of selectmen, led by me, started in January. Are you all set for lifeguards? Can we work with another town, can we work with the camps? And it just, the camp just got kicked down the road.
Yeah.
I'm a former lifeguard, so.
January is too late, and I think you need to be having the discussion there, budget season.
The other thing is, and you're talking with the camps, I'm gonna throw something outside the box, they all have lifeguards. They all have swim instructors.
Yeah, they're hiring people for the summer.
That's right, well, maybe, maybe, maybe they could be our vendor, will you supply lifeguards? I don't know, I'm, I'm thinking outside the box.
I don't know, we'll see.
Yeah.
All done?
Yes.
How long were you adjourned?
Second.
All in favor?
All right, thank you.
Hey, thank you.